Good evening, everyone. If we could all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening. Like to welcome everybody to the Town of Standish workshop. Before we get started, just a little, little announcement. Wanted to kind of go over what a workshop is. A workshop is for the council to discuss topics that are gonna be proposed or going, gonna be possibly happening in, in the town. The, the public has the right to come and attend. They don't necessarily have the right to talk, even though we want to hear from you, and if you do have something, we will open it up to public comments. If you can keep your comments to five minutes and one time per topic. So you come up, introduce yourself, name and where you live, and then you'll have five minutes to talk. And then, once you go sit down, even if you use three minutes, let's say, that will be your, your one time up. Okay? We'll start out with the representative, we'll go to public, and then we will discuss amongst ourselves. For the council, if we can keep our comments pertaining to the topic at hand and not kind of like go fishing down another avenue, make sure that we're, if you do, we'll just kind of like point of order and bring it back in. Fair? Perfect. If we could start with representative from the Portland Water District. Please state your name and obviously who you're with. If you come to the mic, sir.
I'd have to go over there with the PowerPoint.
Are you running a PowerPoint?
Yeah.
There you go. Yep.
I'm a, I'm a stander, so if you don't mind.
You gotta get before your mic and say that again.
Yeah, you gotta.
All right, I'll say. I might, I might get a little animated with my arms, but.
It's all right.
I'm Chad Thompson. I'm the source protection coordinator for the Portland Water District. Source protection coordinator is, Sbegel Lake is the source of the water supply. So my job is to coordinate the protection up. So, a little bit of background real briefly. So you, I think some of the people familiar with Maple Street know that there's a couple old defunct facilities down there, buildings, that I understand today they've started tearing down. That's kind of where this all started was, one of these buildings, you know, it won't be there. Don't, no need to drive to it anymore. So it's kind of like looking, you know, I was coordinating that demolition job, and I said, you know what? If you don't need to drive down this road, wouldn't it be great if, if the pavement wasn't here? And right around that time, the town asked us, and we were, the town was looking into, you know, John, the director of Public Works, was looking into possible grant money to design, correct me if I'm wrong, at any point. To get design work done for a new fishing pier. This one's in rough shape. So they were asking us about the lease, because there is a lease between PWD. It turns out that, you know, there's been a lease since nineteen forty-five. Insane, and it's, and it's renew, it renews annually. So the town looked into, you know, got the lease document from us, and they looked into this grant, applied for, tried to apply for the grant. The word, the word from the grantor was that, in order to, to be eligible for grant money for whatever it is, for design, for the bill, you know, say you're gonna get a grant to build a new pier, you needed long-term right title and interest. In talking to the town, my understanding of what that is is twenty-five years, what, twenty-five years? Had to be at least twenty-five years right title of interest. So, you know, I'm down there coordinating these demos, and I'm thinking, all right, well, I started seeing like possibility of everybody to win. Right? So that's where this began, and it was, it's, it's a concept plan. It's there's no, so I wanna, you know, make sure everybody understands that this isn't a, a problem that needs to be solved. This is a, a value add. The concept here is that everybody wins. I call it a win-win-win. Town of Standish wins, Portland Water District wins, and then my job is Sbegel Lake wins. Right? So, and, you know, get it right out front there. I think that's, that was in the article in, in paper. I don't, I personally don't, if, if those aren't true, we shouldn't do it. You know? It's, this is not, this is not trying to convince the town of something that we want to do. Everybody should benefit. Just an example of some of the legalese, that's, that's just, so this presentation is actually the one that I gave to our board. And they voted on this at their business, our board of trustees voted on this at their business meeting last night. The concept plan defined by the memorandum of understanding. And we'll go through some of what that memorandum of understanding says. But basically says, given these criteria, it's just an agreement between the Portland Water District and the town to work together toward this end. And we would do it together. So planning, design, conversations, financing, all of that. Would be shared costs, the whole thing would be shared. If we can't make it work, we don't do it. Memorandum of understanding is just as simple as, we're gonna try. So this, this slide is actually, doesn't necessarily, things have changed a little bit. The, the picture on the left is the existing. So anybody standing at the railroad tracks is what you'd see. The lake in the distance, and then at the end of the road, there's the fishing pier. When it says proposed two thousand twenty-five, part of the memorandum of understanding was, I had these other projects going that were adjacent, these building demolitions and things. I was able to partner with the Department of, you know, long story short, is I was able to partner with Department of Transportation, main Department of Transportation, and they helped pay for some of that work. That left me some money left in the budget. So I was able to offer the town, I said, well, if you, if this is a good, you know, if you agree this is a good idea, we could apply some of this money to basically setting the table for this concept idea. Removing the pavement, stabilizing it robustly, and then installing a reclaimed path along the fence there that would be, you know, we would want to make sure it's ADA compliant and all that, which I don't think. In, the people in the concept plan, we, we haven't, we're not professionals at ADA. We still gotta sort that out, but it's, it's a detail. I think it can be done. If it can't be done, we shouldn't do it. Anyway, that money, I have found out since I made this presentation, doesn't have to be this year. So like, we'll still honor that criteria in the memorandum of understanding of setting the table, so to speak. And so when I say setting the table, I mean removing the pavement, grading it so that it's crowned and would shed the water to the sides. You know, we don't want it shooting straight to the lake. And then we want, eventually, it would be a native buffer, you know? What I'm picturing is, is essentially a park with a nice winding path through it, maybe some park benches. So, I mean, this is just a, a mock-up. You know, what we do at, at work is, is to protect the lake. Is any, anybody who owns waterfront property or in the shoreline zone, if they want to make their lake more, lake friendly, we designed something like this. We take a fore and after, and we say, here's what we recommend, and this is what it might look like. I just had my staff mock this up. Could be anything. This is just a, you know, just to paint the picture of what this could be. And what you're looking at there in the foreground there under, under the word future is, is the railroad, railroad end. Basically talking about converting Maple Street from the railroad tracks to the lake. So, then, so we can kind of paint this picture, we're having a conversation with the, with town staff, and right off the bat, you know, Director of Public Works says, oh boy, well, what about, what about plow turnaround? So if we still gotta maintain these people that live on Maple Street, we gotta accommodate a plow turnaround, and then, and then certainly folks that are gonna use the fishing pier, need a place to park and all that stuff. So it turns out Portland Water District owns some land there on the upland side, on the, on the left, on the upland side of the railroad tracks, as you see in the picture. And our, we talked in concept, I floated it through the management at, and trustees at the Portland Water District. And if this plan were to go forward, we would be willing to lease, as part of this long-term lease, a accommodations for a parking lot on that, on that parcel. Parking lot slash plow turnaround. It would take care of that. Would, you know, potential showstopper averred. So key points of this, the, of the memorandum of understanding and the concepts. So the framework, maybe the, the outline of, of this concept of how we would organize it, and who would be responsible for what. So I mentioned twenty-five, twenty-five year renewable lease to the town for one dollar a year. That would be when, you know, if this thing is, is a success from the beginning to the end, we try, we succeed, this thing gets built, it's the town's. And it would be the town's facility. So the town can make it anything they want. It would, it would essentially could be a park, could be a fishing park. You know, as long as it has the buffer, which is what the lake cares about and what I care about in my position, it would be the town's, similar, similar to the town beach. It would be, it would be your facility to manage and own, essentially own. So there would be fifty-fifty cost sharing for the designs of pretty much everything. So the design of the buffer and the winding path, what does that look like? This would be worked out in a conversation with the town. We would work together to come up with that design. The design of the, of the parking lot and a plow turnaround, that's, you know, gonna, obviously I'm gonna defer to the town on what you guys need, but we're involved in that because we want to make sure that the design is done well. So we, we, you know, we want the water, you know, the stormwater to go where it's supposed to go and all kinds of things. But it, it actually looks like, looks like it would be pretty straightforward. I can't. Anyway, we, we would be fifty-fifty on paying for that, too. And then the construction, the construction of the buffer and winding path would be fifty-fifty. So we pay for that. So the plantings, the, you know, it's, nothing's cheap these days, and but the actual build, the construction of that railroad tracks to the lake would be fifty-fifty. The district, as I mentioned earlier, would be responsible for kind of setting the table for this to happen. Removal of the pavement, grading, robust stabilization, temporary path. We anticipate, we, you know, and we, when I say we, that myself and, and town staff, as we were brainstorming this idea, fully expected that it would take some time to make this kind of fruition. This is not something we would, you know, we're just gonna take it as it comes and what we can do. But we're not proposing, we, you know, this, we start digging tomorrow. The town would be responsible for releasing ownership of the right-of-way, the road right-of-way from the railroad tracks to the lake. And really what that is, is just basically saying, if we're gonna go through all this trouble to design and pay for, you know, converting this to a, you know, a buffer park, winding path, we don't want to then later on, you know, have this road right-of-way that somebody's gonna say, oh, take it all back up, you know, we got a road here. So the town would be responsible for constructing the parking lot in the plow turnaround. So we're talking with John, the Director of Public Works. He would, he was, you know, he has a pretty good idea of what he wanted and he's gonna build, you know, I think he's gonna do most of that. Maintenance of the facility wants the leases in place. So we, in conversation with the town, we, we agreed that we would want to make it relatively, you know, it's everybody's best interest to have be low maintenance. They're thinking like a spring-fall type cleanup, and the good news is, if you go in with that idea and you build it with native plants, it should be, you know, pretty low maintenance. When you're just talking about a nice one, you know, maintaining your path is really, and it's just native plants growing as they would. And then all the pier, so once it's, once it's a town facility, the pier itself is, is the town's. The responsibility of the town would be to, to build the pier and that kind of thing. I think that's it. Any questions?
We'll get to that. Um, thank you for that.
Sure.
Uh, well, we'll start with the public comments. If you just want to come up and, and make a, a comment, feel free. Yeah, Mr. Farley, come on up. Just a reminder, you will have five minutes.
I'll try to tell my story, and I'll try to do it real fast.
Yes, sir.
Elmer Farley, five oh one River Road, Standish. I, uh, I disagree with what he's talking about. I'm seventy, I'm eighty years old. I've been going to that wharf for seventy-three years. Just about every day. And I've been driving down there for, since nineteen sixty. I would no longer, if that is built the way they want it, that would be my, the end of it. I had a good friend of mine last year, he was in a wheelchair. He's wheelchair accessible. That's the only, only wharf on Sbegel Lake that has wheelchair accessible. And that's starting to grow up. Ronnie drowned. Down every day. Was in a wheelchair. That was the only way he could fish. He died last year of Asian orange, Vietnam vet. And I'm disabled. I have a permit from the state of Maine to hunt from a motor vehicle, and I can't walk. So there's no way I could walk down there, which I'm down every, I was just down there today. And to be able to get there in a wheelchair, you could get down the hill, but you never could get back up. And if they make it the way they want it, with wood chips and things, I trip my toe, I'd be on the ground. And then I'd probably end up calling the ambulance here to come and help me out. And it just aggravates me to think that if you or we, the people in the town releases, really gives them the right to that road, that will be the end of any access to Sbegel Lake that we have as the town. There's so much we could do with that. That road would be gone. No one, no one here, we'd never get that back from the Water District. They're asking us to sign off. Is that right, or?
It, it wouldn't be giving it to us. You'd just be releasing the.
Well, who would, who would own it if we gave up our rights to it?
It would just, the, the land, I, I'm not a real estate attorney, but the way I understand right-of-ways is that right-of-ways are over the top of the land. The land underneath is, is already the Water District, because they own, we own both sides of the road.
So I own land on both sides of the river road. So I own underneath. They tear that road, that's my, I can start, that, that doesn't sound right to me. It could be.
I believe, and then may, and maybe there's someone here that knows more than I do about this, but I believe that when, if a town were, any town discontinues a road, or right-of-way to a road, and then the ownership reverts to the property owners on each side.
On that road down there, that they're putting like the new road in there to tear that building down. That used to be north extension. That's still on your GPS. Whoever released that, I mean, when did we dis? Excuse me, I had a stroke, so it takes me a few minutes to say that. But did we, how did we get rid of that road?
I'm not sure of the specifics.
Has that, has that been? I can't explain it. Did we disclaim that road?
Sure, it was done when the boat launched. I, I don't know.
Goes all the way through. If you put your GPS, it comes right out by Mary's house. And it still says. So I was just curious about that. And they're tearing that up now. They're tearing the culvert and everything. There'll be no way for snowmobilers or anyone to get through there. I probably ran out of time.
You got twenty seconds.
Oh, that's good. But anyway, I met with this gentleman, and I had a good conversation with him. But we agreed not to agree.
Fair enough, fair enough.
But anyway, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Larabee. I live at eleven Maple Street, and there's a lot of things that Chad has said that, you know, I think is great. My biggest concern, now we see all kinds of stuff goes on down that three-hundred-foot road. I mean, there's drinking, there's drugging, there's inappropriate behavior all night, all day, all weekend. And my concern with him, with Portland Water District closing that three-hundred feet off and making that parking lot on their property, that is bringing all that crap up across our property closer to my, to our house so that we don't see it when it's down there, but if it's in that parking lot, snowplow turnaround, it's gonna be in our face. So I was thinking today, where you are on that northeast extension, where you're going in to take that building down, why could that not be the snowplow turnaround? And move those rocks, those boulders that you have to block it off, back further? And then have the snowplow turnaround there. The, the tracks aren't gonna be used, so you can just remove those tracks and give it a wider berth instead of building that, and then yes to the parking, maybe they can park where the snowplow is. But that was my concern. You know, my kids are grown, but I have grandkids, and they're around, and we go down to the fishing pier every Sunday. And I just, the, the, the stuff that goes on, I just don't want it in our backyard, so to speak. So that is my husband's and my concern of that part of the pro, the, the plan that you're trying to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I might be able to add a little bit to the, one of the first things we did when the, when the plow turnaround became an issue, you know, that trying to get around, trying to solve that problem within this concept. That railroad is owned by DOT. And I asked them if, if that would be a possibility and they replied, no, we're doing that DOT.
So even though you've cut that fifty-foot width.
Yeah, you have to come up to Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. Even though you've cut that fifty-foot width already on where the stream is gonna go, so there's that distance from the left-hand side to over to Maple Street, why have the tracks there if, I mean, they're useless?
All, all of those decisions were the. All, all of those decisions were the, were the main department of transportation's. But the, their decision to, to, when, when we removed the culvert, originally they were going to put a bridge back in. They decided against that. It's, it's their call. Both, both of those things were their call.
I think that...
We don't own it.
I just think that small section, which is irrelevant, I mean, there's no, nothing going on it. Take that off just for the snowplow to have a wider area, but...
Any other public comments?
I'm Bobbly. I live on five fifty-one River Road. I come in on the backside of this whole mess. Uh, I am down using that. I used that today. I was there today. And I took my family out on the, on my boat. My boat's rather large. And there is no dock simple to get in and out of, except that one, uh, for me, cause the boat, the side of the boat is about this high. And if you try to get on the, the town dock and get on the boat, it's just about impossible. But I don't, I guess I'm unaware of the reasoning of why they wanna put this in, or you wanna put this in, in the first place. Is something going on? Are you putting in, are you changing the, the whole territory for some reason? Is, is something happening that I don't know about?
Do you want me to respond? So, so there's, so there's no acute problem to solve. This, this, this concept was a, is very much value-added. It was, it seemed like it would be a better situation for everyone involved. Now, I'll back up and say from a lake protection standpoint, water quality protection standpoint, there are really three main concepts. One is preventing erosion. So, erosion is basically flushing pollutants into the lake. That's the worst-case scenario. So, you fix the erosion, priority one. After you fix the erosion, you try to say, okay, where can I put that stormwater now so that it infiltrates into the ground? Right? So, now it's not washing something out, it's going into the ground. Just by going into the ground, it's getting filtered. And then it makes its way through the groundwater to the lake. The next level of, of lake protection, of water quality protection is not only preventing erosion and infiltration, but treating the water. And the way you treat water, it's actually very simple. You put it into plants, you put it into forests, you put it into nature. A natural buffer with an overstory, middle story, understory, and a duff layer in the forest produces striking quality water. That's the reason.
Are you saying...
Right now, we don't have an erosion problem, so it is not an acute problem to fix. But we don't have infiltration and we don't have treatment. Both of them would be value-added for our lake protection. That's, that's, that's really where it, it's the motivation from the water district standpoint.
From, from that despect, from that description, yeah. Wow, there is just no erosion going on there that I could see, period.
Agreed, agreed.
Nothing. And what, what is there?
The pollutants that are going into the lake right now would be road sands, if they, you know, if they sand the road. That is laden with nutrients and those going to the lake. All, all the cars parking there, all the petroleum products and chemicals and things like that, trash, all the stuff that happens on an impervious surface, that gets flushed into the lake. But it's, like I said, I, I would not categorize it as a, an acute problem that needs to be fixed. This is, it's okay with the water district if the town were to decide that this is not something they wanna do. It's okay with us. The con, the concept is if it's not a win-win-win, we shouldn't do it. You know, it's, that's what, that's really what it is. If it doesn't, if the situation that we would create is not better than the one that exists for everyone, then, then we're not, you know, we only wanna do it if you wanna do it.
It's, it just seems like the only reason that the water district would wanna do it is cause they don't wanna patrol it every day with their trucks and come down there and check on it, in and out, um...
You don't even have authority to...
They're down there all the time and I don't begrudge them. I think it's, it's cool. But if that's their excuse for putting this in so they don't have to go down there, they're gonna still have to go over there. But I don't get it. Uh, it's a, it's a slick setup right now, just beautiful for me. And purple people, I totally agree with that. I've got somebody I wanna take out and he can only walk just a few feet and, uh, that would be the only place I could think of doing it.
I don't, I don't think I mentioned, I'll just follow up and say that both, you know, both the town and, and all of us in the concept conversation, priority one from the very beginning was making sure that we could do it in a way that was ADA compliant. And that honestly, if it's, if we can't do it, cause we're not ADA professionals, that would come in the design phase and whether or not we can, I, I'm confident we can, but I don't know enough about it to answer it a hundred percent. But if we can't, then we shouldn't do it.
May I raise a point of order? Let's, let's, they gotta finish this first.
May I raise a point of order?
Uh, let's finish the public, uh, comments and then we'll go to...
Relates to the comment.
Yeah, if you...
I'd just like to say that, uh, in discussing persons with disabilities, they should be referred to as persons with disabilities. Respect them as people. I understand some people may be more sensitive than others, but I urge everyone that speaks tonight, when they're speaking about access for persons with disabilities, to use respectful terms. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? So, you know more public comments? We'll go to council comments. Um, if we, I'm sure, like myself, I have a few questions. Um, we'll do one question per council first so we can, so the councils aren't keep waiting and stuff. Uh, and I will get back to everybody that wants to speak, as many questions as you have, alright? Um, I'll start with myself, uh, with a question that I have about the release of, um, right-of-way. Uh, you said that, you, you know, you wanna, you wanna release that so that way, you know, down the road, we say, no, we wanna tear it up and pave it, but what in the future get, uh, what's gonna say that you, now that we don't have a right-of-way, said, we're cutting off all access, nobody can go through here anymore because we don't have that right-of-way, so you can just stop us from going through there?
It, it's a great question. The, the, that would be in the lease language. So, it would be very similar to the town beach lease in that it's a renewable lease, so you have a right to renew it. The one caveat that P, that PWD always puts into every lease is that if water quality issues results, then after, you know, and they can't be mitigated or, or if the federal government were to tell us that we have to, or something like that, then that would be the only reason that the lease would be rescinded. In the event, that's another key point of the memorandum of understanding is in the event, if that were to ever happen, which I highly doubt would ever come to fruition, then the town would be reimbursed for fifty percent and, or of the whole shared costs, completely reimbursed for what they've got into it on a prorated basis for the, for the twenty-five-year lease. After the, after twenty years, I mean, twenty-five years, I think it would be negated.
Or could you put in there that we would, if that was to happen, we would get our right-of-way back?
Certainly something I can ask, yeah.
Um, we'll start down here, Phil.
I've got more of a, a statement than a question because I'm not, there's not a lot of questions here, but, um, pretty much when I grew up and everything I've done in life, it's always been if the wheel's not broke, really, you don't have to fix it. And right from the minute we started talking, you said it had to be a three-win, the public using it, the town, and the Portland Water District. Well, so obviously it does, isn't gonna be a win situation for the public, so that, that takes that three wins to me right out of the equation. And also it does, it's not a win situation for Portland Water District because they are saying you could, you could carry the weight. It is, and I'm not sure where this come through the town, cause it almost sounds like the town's pushing for this new uh, walkway and, uh, cutting the entrance off and, um, so I'm, I'm confused. It's already, to me, it's already not a win-win-win situation. That, that's what I have to say.
I, I'll just speak, um, we cannot get a grant for this because we do not, we don't have the language to say that we have ownership of it. So, we tried and we were denied. And so, that was why we said it would be mutually beneficial because as of right now, the pier does need help and with the town, the residents are gonna have to foot the bill because according to our grants, we cannot qualify.
But we're gonna have to foot the bill anyways. He said that they, they would not do the fifty-fifty with the piers. Is that correct? The pier, we'd have to pay for ourselves. I think you said that. So, we're, we're still gonna have to put the bill for the pier regardless.
Right, so with a grant, I'm saying with this lease, and again, I'm with Chad. I have no skin in it.
Right.
But I'm saying we, if we had this, then the grantor already said, yes, we would be eligible for the grant, so we wouldn't be paying for the pier to be updated.
Had what? I'm not sure what.
Uh, so if we, if we have something that says we have a twenty-five-year lease agreement, we have one with Rich Memorial and we already have one with the Overlook. Um, so it would just be the third one that we have. We could, we would be eligible for grants.
Can we get a twenty-five-year lease with the existing, uh, setup we have now instead of year-to-year?
I don't know.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Let's go to this side. Yep, Deegan?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to ask the representative from the Water District, do you know what the word intent means? What does it mean under civil rights law? With respect to the rights of persons with disabilities here. You're proposing, you have a facility that's currently being used by persons with disability and some of the representations you had of future potential ways the, uh, approach to that dock might present itself. Do you feel that the Water District has met its obligations under intent?
I, I, I feel that together with the town, we would expend every effort in, in the intent to accommodate.
So, my, my personal, uh, uh, situation is I come from a long background, over thirty years in civil rights. And if I were a member of a public body that proposed their approach to a facility that way, I would, I would be ashamed because it's clearly an intent to discriminate. You knew or should have known that that approach, as characterized as future use, does not meet the needs of persons with disabilities. In determining the services and were any people with disabilities or organizations that represent people with disabilities involved in the, uh, proposed approaches that were used there?
On, on the towns, and they were. Our Parks and Rec Department is, is highly skilled. Everything the town does, offers people with disabilities, our Rich Beach does. We have, we got grants for two handicap wheelchairs, so one hundred percent. He was more referring to the angle of the, we understand what the angles have to be and we didn't know with the regrade what the angle would look like. So, is it a straight? Is it a curved? It was one hundred percent set in mind. Parks and Rec was involved. They are, they are trained, they have certifications, and they were a hundred percent involved with that.
You're saying that proposal was done with the town and...
So, Parks and Rec was involved in it, yes.
Thank you for sharing that. So, with respect, you talked about a crown. And if you have a pure crown, that means the runoff, if you're going to have a walkway on the side that's meant to be a ready level access for persons with disabilities, having a crown in the middle of that area would cause the runoff to lead towards that area and present ice, for example, or other water hazards. So, you may wanna think about the crown and how it affects, impacts that particular access route. And, uh, how would emergency vehicles access that area if there were rocks coming right away?
Point of order. Uh, hold that question and let's other council members ask questions. You've already asked the kind of one going into others. Well, we'll get back to that if that's alright. Lisa?
Um, this one has sort of been answered, but it also concerns that right-of-way. What is the current grade on that right-of-way?
I don't know the percent. I'd have to check it. Like, none of this has been designed or looked at. This is just to see if this is something we want to pursue um, in that, you know, it would go through a design phase.
Sure, sure. It, so, and the, the way it sits right now, is it two-car, two-way traffic?
It's two-way traffic.
So, is it possible, instead of taking out that right-of-way, is it possible to just redo the right-of-way to allow for drainage? So, people can still drive down to the parking lot? You're draining half of it off on both sides. You're still allowing for passage down. Would that be enough?
I, I don't know if it'd meet the needs. Obviously, we can do improved drainage type of deal if it needs to be improved. Um, but I don't know if the Water District would want a partnership in that type of situation, you know what I'm saying, to share the cost? If that's something the town wants to do on their own, I'm sure that could be done.
Well, could it be considered? It would still be improving, uh, we'd still be updating the right-of-way to improve the, the drainage. You'd still have the foliage and the forestry on both sides, but we're not taking away that parking lot further down for the people who need access? Is that something that could be considered?
The, the road there right now is, is crowned. So, what I, what I, the reason I was saying is that when you remove the pavement, it's hard to know whether the gravel underneath is crowned. And so, setting the table, the way I explained it was just to making sure that the, after removing the pavement, that the, what you left of the grade of the gravel underneath and the mulch on top of that was down the right way. So, there, there are major drainage problems now.
Right. Thank you. Um, you have a question?
Jen down there with a question.
I have five.
Well, let's go with one. Okay.
I'm looking at a map of this area that has a map of, 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 an area for the, where the people go loaded with rocks and a little bit of sander. And then there's the, the old loft that's there alone. I, I, I think, I was on at the committee when we had the, uh, the right-of-way, uh, fight for over five feet on, what, you know, what, whether the town had the five feet or whether the, the Water District. And that thing seemed to me where good sand, every, every place around there. This in here, maybe it might be able to be used for swimming.
Never?
Ever, never. May, maybe that way. I don't know what the Way, Water District does. Uh, over the, the weekend on my deliberium, I've been down here and looked at it and there were two people down there fishing. And they've been doing it for the longest period of time, so that tells me there's good fishing in this area. Uh, it's the area where the old, um, the Smithville frontage of, uh, water give up. Two hundred and, uh, two, uh, tracks are two hundred feet out into the water. And they got, something's got to be done with that and who's gonna do it? And if you get this map and it's, it's available, I can do it. And there it is right here and this is where the area is gonna be. Railroad tracks. Lot, old, old blocks in, in here, swimming. But dot, 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 dots of, uh, uh, big, big cage, big cage. Right, two of them are located in this area. And if you go here, the, the two hundred and seventy-two railroad tracks, they're still in the water because the, if you look in the, the, excuse me, I've got the old yellows again. I, I know, you wanna say something.
No, I don't, I don't say anything.
Alright. And I think, uh, a good, a good, the, 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 give me a minute. I, I'm in charge of the Water District. Read, uh, read, and I'd like to be able to, uh, see if the town... Read, uh, read, read, and I'd like to be able to, uh, see if the, the town, town is willing to go for a Roman, a Roman, for the, you get, you get what I'm coming for. And uh, I love this area. I love it. And the people out there, what they are fishing, loved it. And there's enough property there to look at that from a, a, a proper way. Can they have with the, where, what the big, uh, truck, the big truck that they, that's my, uh, Volvo. Now Terry would like to do something here. And uh, I can't, I, I can't. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Jen?
And you indicated that the board last night considered this memorandum of understanding. What did they do with it? Did they approve it? Did it get tabled?
They approved, they approved the, the co- the memorandum of understanding. As I presented it and as is in front of you, at their business meeting unanimously approved it.
Thank you.
Watson?
No question really for me. Just a statement of giving away or releasing right of way, whether it's my own property or town property, any right of way, giving it away is leery, slippery slope of point of no return, so to speak sometimes. So it's kinda scares me. No questions though.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm gonna, um, I'll try to keep in order. Uh, I'm gonna go back to myself. Um, and it's really for John. Um, have you done, uh, or have we done a, some type of, I know when we wanna um, look at different roads that have how much traffic is on that road and stuff like that. There's ways of like putting a strip across and they can test things. Have we put it, like, how much is this being used? Uh, how many people go down there and actually use this road? I've been down there a few times. I sense this came up and, you know, it's overgrown. It does look pretty like, not great. I mean, so like, is there a way to tell like, or maybe study before we do this, like, how many people are actually using this road and would, how many people are we cutting off or affecting?
So we don't have our own traffic counter, but I do get them from M D O T. They give them just free of charge and that is something that could be done.
Like on the outside of tracks, who crosses over to actually go down in there or so? Okay. Um. Yep.
Well, um, I'm gonna go back a long, long ways and I can remember when we were talking about elevated walk paths along the water down there, uh, with boat, new boat launches. Now, when we're considering a new pier, if, if you consider relocating the pier next to the boat launch where there's already paved parking, there's already access and eliminating the Maple Road a hundred percent. And that way your boat launch with Bob's boat would be launching off where, beside our current boat launch. So boats coming in could use that if we'd thrown that out there. Um, I'm always the outside the box wondering why. Could that be possibly done since we gotta replace a, a pier and eliminate that pier there completely? And that way you would have accessibility to it because of the parking that's there existing. Question. That's my question.
It's, it's not something I've considered.
Not a bad idea though.
That would be inefficient.
Well, he, I thought it was good fishing all along.
I'll get back to you. Going down to, you got another question?
Yes. Uh, so part of the suggestion is to, for the town to relinquish a right of way. Well, what if we traded the right of way and got other rights of way in its place? Uh, would the Water District surrender rights of way in other places that the town could use, uh, have access in, in other places for other activities? That's something to consider is, uh, you know, this for that. So if you want one right of way, maybe we'll consider accessing other ways, other places with rights of way that we may not have now. I'm just proposing that as something to consider, uh, rather than just us give. And it's also something, you know, because, you know, I see a lot of advantage for the town here. Uh, there's a question of is this gonna be for town residents only or for the general public? Could we limit it to residents only or charge non-residents a fee? I don't know. That's a question to consider. Uh, and it, it really would be better to think of some of these things in advance rather than later. That's, I'll let someone else take some questions.
Uh, I think we went to Lisa next.
Um, yeah, you had mentioned that, um, you would grant Standish some property where we could put up a fifty by fifty foot snow turnaround and you could work up a lease for that? Is that lease gonna be tied to the lease of the waterway access?
It, it would all be one lease, yeah.
Okay, so if something happens and Portland Water decides, mm, we're gonna break that lease, we lose everything. And you had mentioned that we're reimbursed fifty percent for everything. That's not what it says here. It says initial costs associated with the design and construction of the buffer. Anything else is not gonna be reimbursed if that lease is broken, correct? That's what it says right here. Winding path, fifty, oh, fifty-fifty parking lot. Scratch my question. If it's over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If, if our portion goes over seventy-five thousand dollars, you'll only reverse, reimburse prorated on that seventy-five thousand dollars. So if we end up putting, you know, four hundred thousand dollars into this project and you cancel the lease, we're only gonna get back half of that seventy-five thousand dollars prorated, correct?
The, I, I regret putting in the one fifty. The reason we, the reason we, we put in the one fifty wasn't for any reason that we knew of, like how much it would cost or what we wanted to spend. It was, it was purely because if you're going to sign a memorandum of understanding and this is an agreement to work together toward the end of building this thing. It would be, if, if it goes over a hundred and fifty thousand, we couldn't really spend any money on designs and things like that and, and, and work toward this end only to then put it to the voters. And then if it's over a hundred and fifty thousand, it goes to the voters and the voters said no, all, all that money and effort was for naught. So the concept, the memorandum of understanding was, was a way to work together toward this end. And it doesn't, it was, it was time sensitive at the time. If, if the town was, meaning because I thought I only had this money that to do the temporary stabilization, that, that part that P W D was gonna. I, I initially thought, I thought that all I, that I only had two thousand and twenty-five to use that money. It turns out that our board has given me the, the approval to move that, say, say, say we don't do that till two thousand and twenty-six. They like the concept of this. And they love the concept of working with the town to do something amicable together, collaborative together. This, they, they would, we, we would make, we would make that work. The, the hundred and fifty thousand was just, just in order to make a memorandum of understanding, give it, give a memorandum of understanding a green light. You couldn't then have it rescinded later. The reason with a hundred and fifty originally from our understanding is they wanted to try to remove the pavement sooner. If it, if our portion was higher than seventy-five, it had to go to the voters for voter approval. So that's why the hundred and fifty number came in, seventy-five from the Water District, less seventy-five from the town. And if it exceeded that amount, then it would have to go to the voters type of deal. That's why. That's why that was the threshold of a hundred and fifty. But it doesn't need to be in there because if the town wants to do this thing and, and, and P W D wants to do this thing, then we could, we could put it to the voters right now. I mean, it, it doesn't. The, the, the criteria that, the timeframe that I thought I had to spend the money has since been removed. I can spend the money later on if I need to, if this thing were to go forward. So that we can forget about the hundred and fifty dollar, hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap on the whole project. That said, obviously we wanna do it as cheap as possible. But I don't think this would cost a lot of money to build.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Terry?
You got anything?
Any more questions, Terry?
You all set?
You good? Okay. Uh, Jen?
What's the lifespan of the pier? If we take the do nothing approach?
Current lifespan, I'd say less than ten years of where it's currently at. The, basically the sills underneath are rotted, the pillars into the ground have rotted. We're replacing boards monthly down there.
It used to be longer too and it was shortened.
Yeah, I noticed that yesterday.
Shortened over time. So it's, overall, it's coming to its end of life.
And is there an estimate of what it would cost to fix it?
Uh, so we were looking at it for grants. So when we were looking at it, we were thinking fifty to seventy-five. It all depends on how big we want to build it, but fifty to seventy-five thousand.
And, and on, on that, if we don't do anything with this project, we could put that to the voters as well as to spend the money to rebuild it. And if we can't get grants, we can ask the town to build it.
It would have to be, yeah, it would have to go to a vote, yes.
So one question is, why doesn't the Water District pay for a hundred percent of this? If you control the land, uh, that issue of a grant and who, who controls the land wouldn't apply. The Water District could just apply for the grant and, and do this project. And related to that is, uh, what does the Water District pay other towns for use of town land? Do you pay the town of Gorham any funds for, for land that's in the town of Gorham that's used by the Water District? Perhaps you should be paying the town some money, uh, for use of our lands or, you know, payments in lieu of taxes. So the question is, why doesn't the Water District pay for all of this?
And I, I just wanna say that in a way they do contribute in a way to the time. So the intersection grant, they contribute over two hundred thousand dollars to make a better stormwater runoff buffer, uh, better drainage down there. So there, maybe their direct tax payment is not a direct tax payment, but they do do other things that benefited the town down there as well. We, we, I, I would say that we certainly, I mean, I, I feel confident to speak for our organization and for our trustees that we wanna work with the town in an amicable way to find examples like John's talking about where, where you guys were redesign, redesigning the traffic flow. And we wanted to do some stormwater changes and both parties benefited significantly. We achieved our goals for treating stormwater. You know, it, it, it really was near, neither here nor there to the town. It wasn't the town's priority to deal with the stormwater. But we did help the town, you know, to the tune of a hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So us do, us, us working with the town to the ends that we wanted and the town doing what they needed to do, what you needed to do. We, we, everybody wants. So that, that's what this whole concept, this, everything I'm here tonight to talk about, this Maple Street thing was just along the same con, the same lines. Was that, we don't, this is not, we're not proposing this, you know, unless you wanna do it.
Yes, right, right.
It was just, I'm really, really here to ask if you guys are interested in it.
Yes, sir. Um, can we, we'll move on. Any more questions?
I, I just, a comment. I, I was on the council for sixteen years. I've been on for two, so I'm eighteen years on this council. I don't think we've ever negotiated bad with the, uh, Portland Water District. They've come up to the table. They've done exactly what we've asked them to. I think they've been a good neighbor to town just to actually look at the, the lake we have for the effort they put in. So I don't know why we think we gotta put this guy on, on the table about this. He come here tonight because we wanna put a new pier in and he's trying to figure out ways we can do it. As a councillor, I don't care if the town has to spend two hundred thousand for a new pier. I really don't. It's a destination pier. It's people like Mr. Folly could enjoy it. It would be a, a place people would enjoy for the next fifty years. We, we put a culvert in for five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand across the road. And, and it does nothing to improve our town other than cars can drive over it. I, I have no problem as a councillor stepping up and building a pier that's professional built and working with the Water District, whether it's beside their current boat launch or where it is today. And I, I'm not worried about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars going to the voters to ask for that. And I don't know how the rest of your councillors feel, but I think we're beating a huss here a little too hard tonight.
Thank you.
My, uh, my hesitation is based on what was said earlier about the lifespan of the pier and it costing approximately fifty to seventy-five thousand to replace. That's, you know, now, might be more later. That is the same amount of money that we would be putting in to this project and we would lose the right of way. So we would be putting in seventy-five thousand here plus additional costs for the pier, plus losing our right of way. And that's a concern for me. That, it, that's a concern for me. And I, I do understand we can possibly move the pier down to the boat landing. But as someone who grew up fishing, you're not gonna catch a lot with motors and cars running in and out of the lake right there. So, I mean, making a nice, long pier would be great. It also says in here that, um, it's limited to the space depicted on the referenced plan, but there's no measurements there. Are we just supposed to say that little spot that looks like a pier, that's what we're allowed to put back in? It also says, it, I mean, it also says state municipal federal guidelines, but have those changed since we put this pier in? Are we gonna be losing more?
When we, when we, when we did that mock-up of the leased area, we didn't go out there and survey equipment, but we took what is now the old pilings. There's actually no pier where the pilings are now because it's been removed because it was rotted. So we actually included the historic large size pier, where, where, where the pier was historically when it was at its largest is, is the leased area, you know, the proposed, you know. The concept leased area of this memorandum of understanding includes twice the size of the dock that's there now.
So the, the referenced plan that's, uh, referred to here is this picture that we're seeing with no measurements on it?
Correct.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you, by the way, for answering our questions.
Yes. Um, go ahead. I'll, I'll go after you.
You go ahead.
No, go ahead, sir.
I'm gonna mirror, piggyback off of Councilor Parmelo and I'd rather, and, uh, Strubrin, I'd rather keep our right of way, pay for the PR cells to, to reimburse it or rebuild it. And whether it goes to a vote, whether we go to, you know, other things to try and get, uh, get the funds. I think, I think we're saving money in the long run to do it ourselves and we're keeping our right of way. That's, that's the win-win for us. If there was a, a queue or chronic problems with, with runoff there or something directly affecting the lake right now, which there isn't, maybe it's a different story. But let's, let's rebuild the pill ourselves and, and keep it as it is. And if it's not broke, let's not cause it a problem for ourselves.
I, I think, I mean, I don't know if everybody in the council, the, the town staff and I that we're talking about it. It, the, the idea in my mind that seems like it would be a benefit to the town would be to have the area as a park, you know, rather than a parking lot, you know? Because you, you would then have the, you could then make it a facility is what, is, is what I was thinking. But make, you know, if the town, if that's not something the town values, that's fine.
Um, so could you just, I, one question and then I'll just kinda make a statement. Then I think we should probably wrap up and move on. Um, can this project be done without terminating our, terminating our lease?
Yes.
Okay. Um, cause that's where I say I wouldn't wanna give up our right of way. I, I, I said lease, I meant right of way. It's, uh, without terminating the right of way.
I don't think it could be because we would be asking our ratepayers to fund something that could then be taken away.
But couldn't we just put it in the lease the same way you would be putting in the lease that, you know, if something happened, we, we'd get seventy-five percent back or blah, whatever? Wouldn't we be just keeping our right of way and we make, uh, you know, terms where it would be favorable for you as well?
I, I don't know. It's, I, I'm not a, I'm not an attorney. I don't, I don't know what the, if our, what our, what our attorney would be comfortable with.
Yeah. And that's fine. Uh, I just wanted to know this so we can. Yeah, and that's fine, uh, I just wanted to know this so we can, I think that, you know, our job is to also look at things that's gonna better our town, right, and make our town look better. Um, looking at this, these are pretty, these are nice. Um, I don't know about a park, it doesn't really look like a park, it looks like a walkway that's ma- made nice. Um, if you're looking at, maybe you have other ideas of a park and maybe it's gonna turn into a park. Um, as long as it's handicap accessible, it's only three hundred feet roughly, right? Um, you know, you could wheelchair down, you could do all that if you make it with pavement, not reclaim reclaim. You can't drive a wheelchair over that well, my ever reclaimed road, and it's bad enough with my car. Um, um, but, uh, and and I understand your concerns with uh, people going down there and drinking and doing all those crazy things, but I would encourage you to 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 call the cops and and really turn them in, right? And the more we do that, yes, ma'am, and and we can also put it on the radar of the the sheriff's deputies to say, hey, could you make it a point to effus- an emphasis after this is done? I mean, because I think this could be a really nice looking project, we're gonna get it. Who's, hold on, we're 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 done with, I I understand what you're saying. Um, but, you know, so, and I'm not saying I'm against, I'm against giving up our our um, uh, right of way. I I am totally against that, I that I would not wanna do. Uh, but if we can make something nice in this area and you can still use it, if he can still go down and get on his boat and access it and get to his boat, and it looks nice like this instead of what it looks like overgrown right now, that would be great. If Mr. Farley can get down the path to be able to go fish or sit on the pier and enjoy the the morning, then I think we should look at that. I don't think we should just turn this down because, and just because it's it's always been that you've been able to go down there. I understand that, but we we need to be also be able to look at different opportunities for the town to change and grow and make it look better, and if it's a win-win, then I think we should look at that. Um, that's just my, and and maybe how that looks, and if it looks like a park where you could bring kids down, I don't know if there's that much room there, but it doesn't look like a park on this. But as long as it's accessible for a handicap and we don't lose our right of way, I would be all in favor.
Thank you for coming.
I wanna thank you for 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 coming and bringing this to our attention, and, you know, it is a, it's a cool idea. I don't, I think maybe we're in the still the the crawl phase, right? Like, let's, let's keep on going, let's, you know, bring suggestions back. You heard what we said, maybe you can bring that to your to your boss or whatnot and and see what what else is out there that could be done. Uh, in the way it is now, I don't think it would go very far only because of giving up that, you know, that that right of way, that's that's a big, bigger ass than what, and and pay fifty percent, right? Like, hey, I give this and this, and
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, so, thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. Uh, please let us know if you wanna come back, we can put you on the workshop day again, and we can keep on going. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, next on the agenda, uh, we do have a presentation of Route twenty-five corridor traffic study um, conducted by Goral Palmer, did I say that right? Okay, if you wanna, do you have a slideshow? Okay, so, uh, it will, well, why don't we take, uh, like, two-minute break here and, uh, let him set up? If anybody needs to use the restroom. Mean on you. You know, I'm just teasing, buddy. Okay, uh, could you please state your name and why you're here?
Absolutely, my name's Ryan Barnes, I'm an engineer with Goral Palmer Consulting Engineers out of South Portland, Maine. Um, and we're here today to talk about the Route twenty-five corridor study that we've been undertaking, uh, for both Public Works Department and for planning, uh, most recently. Uh, so, tonight, I'm gonna go over a few different topics. I'm gonna run through the methodology and what we've done. So I'm gonna start off by reviewing what the study area for this project was, look at what the existing traffic volumes are versus the proposed, look at what capacity is of the existing corridor. I think we all know what it is, especially in the PM, cuz I just drove through it. Um, but we'll definitely review that, and then we'll go through kind of what our recommendation is as far as an impact fee for this. Um, and I'm happy to take questions going through or at the end, whatever best for the council. So the study area that we were asked to look at is the area of Route twenty-five that's within the cob- compact urban line. Uh, that's roughly from the Gorham Town Line extending over to just beyond essentially where the Standish House of Pizza is. So between there and Cape. Sorry, uh, and that's kind of the more built-up area of Route twenty-five. So, the first step in what we were trying to do was to review what the existing traffic volumes are, what the future traffic volumes are gonna be. So utilizing the traffic counts that were completed as part of several of the development projects that have been going on in the town, we reviewed what the traffic volumes are today. We adjusted them up to twenty-twenty-six, which is what we're considering like a potential design year for the short-term improvements. And then we adjusted to twenty-forty-six, which is um, kind of where the future long-term solution could fit in. So, looking at the traffic volumes, we have to analyze traffic capacity. So in order to do that, we use uh, SimTraffic and Synchro modeling software. It helps us determine what the level of service of the intersection is, so how good it works. Um, looking at it, it's essentially like the grade school system. So an A is a really good intersection, and F is a failed intersection. For signalized intersections, your goal is typically to try to have it as a D or better. Um, obviously, an A is great, but large volume intersections, that's very hard to achieve. But at least a D is considered to be an acceptable level of service. So looking at the existing configuration of the Route twenty-five and thirty-five intersection, you can see, um, and that's the lower section of the table on the right, that the whole intersection as a whole has a delay of ninety-four seconds, that's per vehicle, and a level of service of F. So just in the twenty-twenty-six scenario, the intersection has already failed. Uh, the highlighted cells within there are showing where those major uh, factors that are creating the delay are. So it's the westbound movement, especially, this is looking at the PM peak hour, because looking at the data from the uh, traffic, that was the kind of driving factor in the design of um, these intersections. So the westbound approach, so going away from the Hannaford and coming like through from Gorham is what's causing the bottleneck. The level of service of the Colonial Drive signalized intersection actually comes out as a C, but that's because that's taking into account traffic clearing. So right now, the problem with that intersection isn't, the problem with that intersection isn't the intersection itself, it's that the traffic from thirty-five is backing all the way up into that intersection and causing what we call phase failure. So essentially, you have traffic that can't go anywhere when it gets a green light. So it just sits and causes a queue. Today, it was almost back to Randall's Orchards, and that's without school. So I'm sure it will be a little bit worse when that happens. So, kind of moving ahead, um, with that, we looked at what would you, what would could we do short-term that would help improve the intersection and the corridor and not be like the long-term solution? Um, so what we were looking at since twenty-five and thirty-five is the driving factor, is the bottleneck problem, is trying to alleviate that intersection, and that's obviously gonna be your most expensive of the two intersections cuz it's the one that's already significantly failed. So, the items that we added in to create those improvements are extending the westbound left turn lane so that you didn't have them getting trapped by the through traffic as much as they do today, adding a westbound right turn lane, uh, changing the northbound and southbound configuration. As it sits right now, it's a through-left movement and a right. So anytime that there's a vehicle waiting to turn left, they block the entire through queue, which is why typically you try to have a designated left turn lane and a through right. Um, ideally, you have a left, a through, and a right, but that obviously comes with more cost and more property. Uh, the western leg, so from Colonial to Route thirty-five, that portion has enough existing pavement, we believe, that it could be restripped as a three-lane configuration to provide turn capacity uh, into um, both the coffee shop and to the other businesses along that stretch. By pulling those vehicles out so they aren't blocking the traffic, it allows traffic to flow more freely, which would help with the backups, because even the people that are getting through the intersection at thirty-five still get bottlenecked by turning traffic, which then bottlenecks the intersection. So it's all kind of a domino effect. And then, um, along with uh, changing the two dedicated left turn lanes, we'd also put in protected phases. That's when you get the green arrow, so it's your turn, and you know it's your turn, so you can clear. Um, and then finally, upgrading the signal, I don't know if it's been done recently, but I looked at the signal for Roger probably in two thousand and five, and it was a very old controller then. So if it hasn't been upgraded, it's one of the older controllers in the state probably at this point, cuz the state has replaced a lot of their older ones. So newer technology means better detection, means the signal will work better, uh, which will help all around for safety and for mobility. The long-term solution, so again, this is that twenty-forty-six horizon. Um, in addition to the stuff that we just talked about, because we designed it so that none of that would have to be undone, um, or planned it that way, our recommendation would be to widen to a five-lane section from twenty-five and thirty-five all the way down to the smoke shop. The reason for that is that you really need that throughput capacity of the two lanes coming out, plus the turning lanes to avoid the bottleneck happening all the way up. And this again is in twenty-forty-six when volumes have increased by over twenty percent from what they are today. And then, in addition to that, it would be improving the intersection at um, Colonial Drive with a new signal, upgrading that one, similar to what we did for Route twenty-five and thirty-five in the short-term solution, and also widening the portion of twenty-five between Oak Hill Connector and um, Route thirty-five to be a four-lane section, so it would be two throughs westbound, again, trying to clear that primary bottleneck, which is that westbound through volume, and then a turning lane and a through lane eastbound. And just so you can see, since I didn't say it before, in the short-term solution, I told you the goal was to try to get to a D, we're down to a C at that intersection, and just by fixing that intersection, we actually did see improvement at Colonial, so now Colonial's a B. So the short-term solution would create, um, you know, very acceptable levels of service at both those locations. The long-term solution actually would obviously be even better, that would be a B and an A, but that's obviously a much larger undertaking, which is why we thought of it as a phased approach. So, this is just a graphical depiction of what I just described, the short-term solution. Man, that's kinda slow. I know I talk fast, but I don't think I'm that fast. Um, so this is a graphical representation of what we were talking about for that short-term solution. So again, it has that um, two-way center-left turn lane on the left-hand side of the intersection. It's got additional turning volumes coming westbound to try to separate out your through volumes from your turning volumes so that they aren't blocking each other, and again, flipping the through right to a through left, I mean, I'm sorry, a through left to a through right, both northbound and southbound, and completely replacing the signal with a new system that meets today's standards. The, our opinion of cost for construction for this phase would be approximately two million dollars. Uh, the long-term solution, and I'm just gonna step through this really quickly, um, so this is starting. Oh, yeah. I'll I'll go as quickly as the machine will let me. So, the impact fee for the, or the long-term solution, so on this page, you're seeing that four-lane section between Oak Hill Connector and Route thirty-five. Um, you're seeing, uh, again, the enhanced additional turning lanes and pockets along um, twenty-five, thirty-five, both northbound and westbound being added in. You're seeing the beginning of that five-lane section going from Route thirty-five towards Gorham to the east. Um, this is where we would be improving and replacing the signal at Colonial. Uh, that one is a newer system, but by twenty-forty-six, it won't be. Um, typically, design life of controllers is fifteen years. The one at Colonial, I'm assuming is older than that because the Hannaford's been there longer. The one at the top of the hill, I would guess, is probably at least forty years old. So, they're still functioning, but they would be considered end of life. You would replace them rather than try to rehab them. And then, that five-lane section kinda peters out as we get through the gas station and through the smoke shop so that all of those turning movements don't end up, you don't wanna drop the lanes and then everybody just bottleneck at that location. So it's trying to find that right balance of widening to clear the bottlenecks without creating a new problem. Uh, the total cost of a long-term solution, and this is in, this is inflated to twenty-forty-six, is approximately six point six million dollars. So, kinda moving on to setting up an impact fee to try to collect the cost for this work. So the methodology that we used, and we've done this for other projects, is, you know, the impact fee equals the cost of the construction and the design divided by what's called the added capacity. So I mentioned earlier that our signals, um, instead of operating at a D, are actually operating at a C, and a B, and then an A. That means there's added capacity to those intersections. So, what I essentially ask my team to do at that point is to break the model. I want them to fail it out, I want them to get to a D, and I do that by increasing the traffic that's entering that intersection. Uh, what that analysis showed is that for added capacity for the short-term solution, we added approximately three hundred and fifty-five vehicles, and for the long-term solution, we added approximately seven hundred and fifty-one vehicles. Again, the cost was a little over two million dollars for the short term, six point six million for the long term, and for the purposes of the calculations that I'll show you in just a moment, we'd assume that the town would be responsible for half of the cost since the signals are already at capacity. So, using that equation we discussed earlier, for the short term would be the two million dollars divided by three hundred and fifty-five vehicles, which is that added capacity. Um, and then again, half of that would be covered by the town for the fifty percent. This would work out so that approximately, this would have an impact fee of approximately $2,905.63 in the long-term solution, and this would be collected after the short-term work is already budgeted and paid for essentially. So these are in future dollars, would be $4,403.46. Just as an understanding, that's per trip, or per vehicle trip through the intersection. Essentially, a single-family home generates .9 trips during the peak hour in the PM. So you would multiply that by .9 per residential unit. So one single-family residential unit would have an impact fee of approximately $2,731. If you're talking about like a multifamily, those have a trip generation around .5, .6. So that impact fee would be approximately $1,482 per dwelling unit. Businesses obviously would be a little bit different, but it would be based on their traffic analysis as to how much traffic they're actually going to put into that intersection. So the bigger the business, the more they would have to contribute, obviously. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
I'd ask a brief point of information. Do you have them explain what a compact urban line is?
Hold on. Could you state that again? What were you asking?
If you could, just a point of information, at the very beginning, you mentioned the, I think you referred to as the compact urban line. I have a sense of what that is, but the general public may not understand what that's all about.
So a compact urban line is essentially the built-up area within a community. So outside of the urban compact, it's typically DOT jurisdiction. Inside the urban compact, it's typically town or city jurisdiction. But it's the built area based on density. So it's usually based on number of houses or number of driveways within a quarter mile of each other.
And who determines that?
That's determined by main DOT.
And the town is responsible for maintenance within that area versus, and if it's substantial infrastructure, depending on what it is, if the state's requesting it, they are responsible. I just wanted to briefly touch on impact fees. I didn't know if the council understands what we're doing. So with these new homes that are going in, so sixty homes were just approved off Rose Lane. They were subject to a road impact fee. That money has to be used within ten years of collecting it to be used within that area of roads that it's being affected. Five Brothers Development just had one put also across from Apple Lane, fifty-six units. So those numbers were applied to their impact fee. I think both of them, I don't have the exact number, was around $100,000 each that they have to contribute to the town for road impact fees because of the number of units. As they go and adjust their models and homes are added, that impact fee changes to that development by the number of homes or units that they're putting in.
And I, sorry, I should have started with that definition. So the whole purpose of doing an impact fee is because, or typically is because you have an area like Route twenty-five corridor that is already at capacity. So any development that comes in, if they were to try to pay to foot the bill to do these improvements, you would have zero development, because it's going to be very unlikely that someone's going to come in and spend the $2 million to fix this. And it's the, kind of the straw that broke the camel's back. The first one that wants to go will fix it, and then everybody else will benefit. So the advantage of doing it this way is that everybody incrementally essentially pays their fair share, small or large, and it helps kind of fund the project upfront, so that, you know, DOT will approve the traffic movement permits, knowing that they're paying into this fee, and it'll allow the projects to move forward while we're working through the details of getting everything improved.
Great. Before we go to the council, we're going to go to any public comments. If anybody would like to, I saw a hand right here. If you'd like to come up and state your name and where you live.
Vicky Higgins, 198 Blake Road. And so all this stuff I tried going through and listening to this, and it's really hard to follow. So my concern where Blake Road comes out with traffic getting backed up went across from Randall Orchards. So we have a traffic light at Colonial, but where the vet is in Rose Lane for that development is not right there at that traffic light, it's up further. So how does that weigh in to people coming out of that area to get on twenty-five and holding up traffic? Because that light is back to turn into Hannaford's and the savings bank.
Yep, and the, again, the key in this entire process, we recognize, was that westbound traffic that backs up. So I know it backs up past Blake, it was almost there today when I came in.
Blake Road is the cutthroat.
Yep, so by kind of opening up that bottleneck, it's kind of think of it as water flowing through a pipe. It'll flow a lot cleaner, everybody will get through. Means there'll be less traffic queuing, less traffic blocking in those areas. So it'll have more opportunity and more gaps for vehicles to get in and out. Right now, there are no gaps, because it's full of traffic. So if it gets to a point where traffic's flowing freely, you'll get what's called the tuning of vehicles, which is created by, you know, you have a red light, so all the vehicles have to stop. And then when it goes green again, you get a platoon or, you know, a grouping of vehicles. So it allows gaps for people to be able to make those turns that don't exist today because of those bottlenecks.
I still don't see how it's not going to be bottlenecked, though.
Because the problem right now is that the traffic at Route thirty-five is what's actually backing all the way up. It's not Colonial, it's not the gas station, it's not Randall's. It's that it's backing up all the way from that beginning point. So if you can clear that and free that up, then you won't have the cars that are sitting blocking those other intersections.
I see. So in, in your study, did you take, so, and I guess my question is, going back, and I'm sorry if this is gonna kind of be outside of it, is Rose with, Rose Lane, are there, is there going to be another road that enters and exits? That aside from Rose Lane?
Answer's no. MDOT also, and Gore Palmer, looked at, did a traffic study to see if there was a need for a, A, an MDOT permit. It did not qualify for one that expansions being put into Rose Lane that was just approved. So that's why, you know, it didn't meet the criteria to have a traffic signal there.
Right, but if there was a second road that came out on thirty-five, it would eliminate some of the traffic in and out of, because it'd give two, two ways in and out of that whole development area, is kind of my thinking.
Like a bypass, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, like a, so up on Woodbury, there's a second road for, and a parallel lane in that development. So there's, you know, a road in, and then that second road, I'm assuming, is going to be a way to have the flow of traffic through that development. So with the Rose Lane, I was, because I don't know all the particulars. I didn't know if there was any discussion about another road that dumps out onto thirty-five on the other side of Georgie Jack?
There wasn't, because it didn't qualify, because it was able to come out onto twenty-five. If there was another added expansion, maybe that would be something that would have to be looked at. But at the current sixty units, it didn't qualify.
Yeah, so a main DOT traffic movement permit doesn't kick in until you have more than a hundred vehicles during the peak hour. So that one is only around fifty, I believe, for total traffic right now, as is proposed. So a larger development would require a traffic movement permit, that one didn't. That is another benefit to impact fees, is right now, a lot of, someone could come in and just do a bunch of small piecemeal projects that wouldn't trigger DOT, wouldn't necessarily provide any funds to the town to fix any of these issues. But as a result of this impact fee, it could be levied against projects, regardless of if they qualify for DOT permits or not.
Thank you. Next. State your name and your address.
Scott McCain, I live at Eight Garden Side Drive. One of the concerns that we've had with the Rose Avenue or Rose Street is being on Garden Side Drive, we're private, Garden Side condominiums. And how are you going to mitigate the traffic? Our big fear is people coming from the west that want to go into that sixty-unit apartment building, cutting off through Orchard and our Garden Side, if you understand what I mean. So in other words, Colonial, right after Colonial is Orchard?
Yep.
Orchard goes up to Garden Side, Garden Side goes up to Rose. So people are going to, instead of coming up and making a right-hand turn on Rose during these traffic times, they're going to want to go through Orchard and blast up through Garden Side. This is private, we pay for the plowing, we pay for the repairs. How do we mitigate that?
So again, this isn't, hopefully, we don't have backed-up traffic with future fixing of the intersection, that the traffic's not backed up or looking to cut down Rose. As we discussed, you have an option of putting up a gate, something of that nature. It's completely private, you could ask the sheriff's office. I mean, it's private, you have the right not to tell people to be in there, I mean.
That's our main concern with that. The other thing is, what about, is this considering the pedestrian traffic?
Yep.
On twenty-five, and what are you, are you going to put sidewalks on that?
Sidewalks are included in the opinion of cost that we did.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Good evening, Peter Beagle, 141 Ospey Trail East. I'm wondering, I mean, I live on that strip, so I've spent my time in the lines, and I'm wondering a couple things. I guess one is, even if you add more capacity, the way people get to work is you find the path of least resistance. So there's all kinds of developable land west of here. So if people can tolerate a thirty-five, forty-minute drive to work, we widen the lanes and spend the money in Standish, and that cuts the trip down to twenty-five minutes. I guess I am not sure why that wouldn't fill back up to, you know, building west of here, and because your trip is now all of a sudden, it's feasible to build where, you know, housing's a little cheaper. So I guess I'm wondering if that somehow factors into your model. I know that's kind of just throwing a dart, but.
Again, that's why we inflated, I mean, DOT uses half percent a year for an inflation rate. So going to the 2046, we increased traffic by half percent a year over that time period. So it was somewhere around an additional twenty percent that was factored into the base values. So that is being accounted for in that regard. And then the additional capacity is what we see is what could be created with that work.
So that was, I guess that was one thought. And then the other question I had was, so Gore Palmer actually did a limited traffic study, I think in 2006 to 2007. I think it's on our website. It actually shows a couple connection roads coming out of Colonial Marketplace up to thirty-five and one on the other side. And I'm wondering, you know, we're improving the mainstream through there, but it does seem very advantageous, some of these other roads and connections that would help take the pressure off that, especially with the development that's happening, I mean, in town. And I think, I haven't really looked at it closely, but the new comprehensive plan, I mean, it looks like this area is the bigger growth area, and more growth is being targeted for this area. So, you know, I guess if I was spending $6 million, where would I want to spend it to eliminate, you know, traffic in this area the best as possible? And then my last thought is the Village Master Plan, or the Standish Corner Master Plan that was done. A lot of time and money was spent on just what this area should be like. And I think Route twenty-five is the biggest physical presence through here. And has that plan been, I don't know, looked at at all to kind of reconcile some of the ideas there with what, with moving traffic through and just how that all comes together to, you know, hit the best balance of letting people move through and maintaining some sort of village and not just ending up with a five-lane traffic corridor through the middle of Village. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll speak to part of that, is staff, John was part of it. Some of the developers had met and talked about ways of connecting the developments, and so that it wouldn't be all on twenty-five, thirty-five. And so they are about it, and we're going to still advance. I don't know if John, if you have any more that came of that meeting, but.
It's all future speculation. I mean, it's a lot of depending on, hey, this person doing this, this person doing that to be able to make it happen. But the goal is to have connection.
Right, no one was opposed. I feel like everyone thought it was a good idea, and sidewalks and connecting, connecting all of that.
I just would like to say, just so, Gore Palmer did do the intersection at thirty-five and 114, and I feel that has been a success down there and alleviated that traffic issue type of deal. So just, you know, we're hoping to look forward to the future and sort of the same model taking place up there in a way.
Okay, great. Okay, that concludes the public comments. I'm going to start off, and I would, I'll definitely agree with you, thirty-five and 114, amazing job. I heard nothing but great comments on it from reading Facebook posts and just the people that I talked to. So great job with that one. Correct me if I'm wrong, with the, across from Rose Lane, the developments that are proposed there, right? Was there?
Nothing currently dead.
That died?
Yes.
Did not know that, okay. Because there was going to be maybe a possible bypass through there, right, yeah?
There is talk of a commercial development, but the whole, the large number of homes died.
Good, thank you, thank goodness. Anybody? Go ahead, sir.
First of all, I was in Gorham Village forty years ago. I had businesses in Gorham, and they were facing exactly what we are in Standish. And how they got around it was the building a bypass, because everything was bottling up on twenty-five and 114. And I'm trying to take you back a ways, twenty years ago or so, Gore Palmer did a feasibility study in Standish Village, which I was a part of. I was on the council then. And we weren't concerned as much about traffic lights as bypasses back then. We're looking at bypasses up by Levitt's Storage, going back around the backside and coming out dumping down on the Gorham line. We also was looking at a bypass Shaw Street from House of Pizza, back around the back of the property, back and back of Hannaford, and dumping down. And I'm amazed, I agree with Peter, when you start getting short of distances, people are going to use that. So if we're shortening the time up, we're going to, I think, generate more traffic on the twenty-five corridor, because people aren't going to be sneaking down Boundary Road or sneaking down Manchester Road if they think we can get through Standish. I don't know, I'm not a hundred percent sure of putting in some traffic patterns there. I would rather spend my money on looking at a bypass as Gorham has had, because people, we realized in Gorham that the people didn't want to stop in Gorham. And all we were doing was screwing up the businesses by having all this traffic that no one wanted to come to business because they couldn't get there. And so, and I don't want to see that happen in Standish, where we keep jamming it up and jamming it up in our businesses, because people don't want to go home, they don't want to stop most of the time. So I'm amazed that, and I still have the plan, I'm sure, at home somewhere, but you must have it, I'm sure, from twenty years ago, unless you haven't. But we had quite a plan, it took us a long time to do it. But I can tell you one thing, I'd rather spend $6 million today and have impact fees paid for it over the next ten years than to sit here and pay $2,000 and put a Band-Aid on something we know is going to be wasted in ten to fifteen years. And five hundred houses have been proposed in Standish Corner. Baldwin's having a bigger rush, Limenton have housing now. So I, I'm not sure if I agree with the way you're going, but I'm just, I think we should start thinking about moving, as Gorham did, moving traffic around the village instead of through it. And just one thing about the traffic lights on 114 and thirty-five. State-of-the-art technology traffic lights, they work great. But now, now what you are doing, and John probably is, I live 1,200 feet from the intersection, and from 3:30 to 6:30 at night, we're stacked up down below my house now, as it was in Subicola Village, because it dumps sixty cars through the light. And then they get the old technology at Standish Corner, can't go anywhere, they can't turn, they want to go to Buxton, they're sitting in, as Jen probably sees in front of her place. But that didn't exist until this new traffic pattern. So great technology, but all you've done is created a bottleneck worse in Standish Corner. And that's why I think. And that's why I think you see them beyond your house, even down beyond the Gorham line now, because it is, everybody's driving in the intersection, because they've waited in front of my house for, uh, seven or eight minutes to get to the light now, where it used to be drive to the light. So, it's a good technology at Sebagel Lake Village, but it has dumped it in, into another poorly designed intersection in Standish. Thank you.
And I was involved in the two thousand six study, huh, my initials are all over it. And that's a great study, but one thing I just wanna point out is, I think bypass would be great. I think the Gorham bypass, when it was built fifteen, twenty years ago, was a hundred and twenty million dollars. And in today's dollars, that would probably be somewhere in the half billion. Plus, the environmental impacts would be very challenging.
We'd be looking at a third, a quarter of the bypass, I'm, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there.
No, I understand.
Because a lot of people, like I said, they wanna move through the village, and I don't know, it's hard to say.
A lot of, the reason for trying to improve the major corridors like Route thirty-five and Route twenty-five is you're trying to put traffic kind of where traffic's meant to be. You're trying to keep people from cutting through the neighborhoods, you're trying to keep them from speeding through, you know, residential areas. So, if you can have the traffic flowing well on the main roads that are designed for it, then there won't be the desire or the need to kind of bypass through those areas to try to take a shortcut.
We've become the Gorham now because of the number of people we have in our town. The Baldwins, Sebagos, Limetons have now become the Standish. And like I said, if we're not thinking outside the box twenty years out, we're wasting two thousand, two million bucks, I can guarantee you that.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Lisa, you said you had a question?
Mm-hmm, um, uh, the type of intersection changes that you're proposing for the Standish Center, what other town have you prop- proposed those for that have done it? And what has been their real, uh, change?
I mean, I think the example of thirty-five and one fourteen, notwithstanding the backup towards your house, sir, um, is an example of it kind of working.
That's a diff- it's a different intersection, and it's set up different, it's not set up how you're proposing to set this one up.
It, but this configuration is pretty much standard throughout Maine.
I, I get that, so what town recently has this been proposed to where they've installed it, and what have their results been?
Uh, Lewiston has installed the same type of system through-
Lewiston?
Well, majority of their corridors, Brunswick has similar systems through most of their corridors. I use those as examples, because I worked for both of those communities. Um, but, pretty much anywhere where you have an existing traffic signal that's causing problems, if you upgrade it, you add the turning lanes where you need them, it will help move the traffic through it.
What's the size differences between Lewiston, Brunswick, and Standish?
Forty thousand, twenty thousand, and ten thousand. But Wyndham, Route three oh two corridor, Route thirty-five corridor, one fifteen, all have similar setups as well.
Are they working on that one right now?
Uh, they're working on three oh two right now.
What are they doing to it? How are they changing it?
They're gonna be doing a huge build grant, so I'm not sure.
So, they're changing it to make it better?
It's already, well, you're talking about completely different traffic volumes. You're talking about ten thousand cars a day versus thirty.
Right, and, but they, they weren't always ten thousand cars a day, that's where I'm going. We don't wanna be ten thousand cars a day through Standish, because we're Standish. And, and that's, that's where I'm going, that's my concern. Is, we're, we don't wanna, we don't wanna get too big for our britches, so to speak. Granted, we do want the traffic to flow nicely, but that kind of a lane in the middle of Standish, all those lanes, you're gonna take up extra side space, plus you're gonna add sidewalks, you're gonna be right on people's front doors.
I mean, we have a hundred and thirty-two foot right away currently, all through that.
Mm-hmm. How much of that is gonna get, gonna get eaten up with the expansions and the sidewalks?
Um, five-lane section would be sixty-five feet, probably. Don't know the exact, because it hasn't been designed, you're probably looking at about an eighty-five-foot tobacca sidewalk on both sides. In the largest segment of that roadway.
Thank you. Yeah?
I, I need to put a conflict of interest on the record. I own the building at the corner of twenty-five and thirty-five, so I'm smack dab in the middle of this. With that said, my biggest concern is safety. Um, if anyone's concerned about safety, sit in my conference room for fifteen minutes and watch the traffic, and you're gonna see that that traffic light is just a suggestion. And if we're gonna put more volume through that intersection, I think we also need to look at enforcement of that light. Because you're, I think, as I see it, the more volume means the more potential for someone to get hurt. And I think the biggest issue is the commercial traffic, they're not, the trucks are not slowing down coming up the hill and stopping at that light westbound.
And I think that could a lot to do with, so, the systems are currently working off loops up there versus video technology. I think, you know, changing that would help alleviate some of that, uh, changing the quick rapidness and stuff like that to be able to detect the traffic when it's there versus what's currently there.
But I think the other thing I just wanna point out is that when you are getting those really long westbound queues, people's both driver inattention, plus the fact that they will start taking, um, what I would consider unacceptable risks, both running lights, running yellows, running reds, uh, making turns they shouldn't be making. Those are all exacerbated when you have backups that are lasting this long, because people get impatient. If people know that once they get the green light at Colonial, that they're gonna make it through, they're gonna be a lot more patient. So, if they have to get stopped every third time through the intersection, I don't think you'll see as much of the red light running, um, as you would today, because people just get impatient while they're sitting.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, why aren't we talking like s- seven hundred thousand dollars plus for a new traffic light, ATC box, light system?
Yeah, since, to, basically, just to replace the signal as it is now, it's almost gonna be, yeah, it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars just to upgrade the signal, no additional improvements. So, it'll work better, but it's not gonna fix the problem.
Not gonna fix the problem.
It'll detect you, but it won't get you through quicker.
I'm gonna go back to this side, is, was there a question down here?
They can, I have a, I wanna read an email from a planning board member, and I have a couple of things, but you can, you can deal with them first.
Okay, Miss Deegan?
Thank you, uh, so I'm thankful that our forebears, uh, thought they had to make that right-of-way so big. Not that I wanna use all of it, because it, it kind of keeps a little bit of the rural character to have, you know, greenery on the sides, but I'm thankful that's there. I'm open to bypasses, uh, uh, but I understand that they're very expensive. But some other way to have arterial flow go around the intersection would be helpful to have. Size and weight of vehicles is always increasing. You measure numbers, trucks are bigger, they're heavier, it's more wear and tear in the road, and the stop traffic, not only is the line of traffic and delay in commuting, but it's pollution, which you don't measure here. And part of it is right in front of that school. And so, uh, the lines of traffic, there is other qualities of life that that traffic is affecting, including the students that are in the school and their, any respiratory conditions that they might have. So, getting rid of that line of traffic will improve the quality of life in other ways. And the, uh, the Gorham Connector, uh, doesn't exist, may never exist, but wouldn't that feed more traffic into this right, this route as well, if it were built?
I'm not in a position to really comment on that, unfortunately.
Okay, well, I just wanna say that, uh, I do, uh, follow some of the other concerns, uh, that pedestrian safety is important. We talked about having more sidewalks in that area for a long time. Traffic cameras will help, but, uh, uh, the safety of the, uh, you know, if you're building a lot of houses in that area, there's gonna be more people on bicycles, on foot, so, safety is something. And I would try to use that larger right-of-way in part to provide bike lanes or, uh, not just sidewalks, something to give, provide better safety for non-vehicle use, thank you.
Great, thanks. Yours is gonna take a minute, so I'm just gonna go to Lisa real quick.
Um, two, two, one is really quick.
Sure.
Um, your numbers that you, um, provided, volumes are adjusted by growth factors, and anti-PHF, the growth factor, that's the point five percent?
Yep.
What's the anti-PHF? Uh, your sim traffic simulation summary.
Uh, what, P- are you in the report, or are you?
I'm in the sim traffic report, page one, Route twenty-five corridor study.
I have the full study. Oh, I don't have the study, I have it in my bag.
Can you pass that down? It's underneath, it's underneath the grids, I just don't know what the anti-PHF is.
That's a really good question, but I don't know the answer to off the top of my head.
Excellent, so, that tells me that, that I, we, I need to look at the numbers more, because you don't know what one of the adjustment factors is, I don't know what it is.
So, I will just say that, the, I'm, I'm the road builder in our group.
Yep.
I do traffic, but I'm the highway guy. This was done by a professional, someone who has, I always call it potato, it's a PTOE, so it's a professional transportation operations engineer.
Mm-hmm.
I guarantee you, he knows what it means, and I'm sure he took that into account, so.
I'm sure, but I don't know what it is, so, oh, well, we can find that out later. But my se- my second question was, the short-term and the long-term plans that you, um, explained, the two-point-six mil, six-point-six mil, how long, what's the length of time for each of those plans? Because on some of the, on some of the projections or the numbers that you gave, you don't do anything for a two-year plan, for the short-term plan, you just jump right to a long-term plan. For some of them, you do a short-term plan and a long-term plan, so it's like we're double-dipping. So, how long is it gonna take for each of those two plans?
And, you mean until they hit the capac- or hit the D?
No, how long is it gonna take to implement, construct?
Oh, construct, um, the two million dollar proj- or, the two million dollar project would be probably a single-season project, so it'd be constructed in one construction season. Maybe kind of go over on the hip, similar to thirty-five and one fourteen, so, fall, spring, fall. The larger project would probably be a two-year construction project.
Thank you.
Uh, real quick, um, was there any consider, or could you do, uh, some type of roundabout, like?
Roundabouts, and I always say I love roundabouts, I've designed five of them, um, in the state, so, I think I still have the most. They're very useful tools in the toolbox, but in order for them to be kind of functional, you need your traffic volumes to be balanced correctly. When you have such a heavy dominant westbound movement, that would actually make it so that none of the traffic would be able to get off of thirty-five. So, instead of backing up past the school, it'd back up probably down to one fourteen, because those people would never be able to get out, because that traffic would just continuously be blocking that intersection. So, they work really well either, when all the traffic is in one direction, which is the example I'll give is the Bath Road, um, or the one in Bath on, uh, I believe it's Congress Street, that was put in because of the commuting traffic for Bath Iron Works. So, AM, it's all left turns, PM, it's all right turns. So, it works great, you don't have to have a signal, it ends up saving a lot of time overall. Where they get more complicated is when you have those conflicting movements. Like, you know, I use Brunswick as an example, um, they, everybody, or a lot of people at the public hearing wanted at Pleasant Street, at Stanwood, where the police station is, to put in a roundabout. Again, the same problem is, is that you have a dominant movement that would make it so no one else could get out. So, you would end up just blowing up the, uh, intersection and all the other approaches. So, great tools, but the balance, the act has to be there in volume.
My comment, and then I'll read the email, is, a lot of this is self-inflicted wounds, because we've been so residential-heavy in our growth and not commercial-heavy that we're becoming a bedroom community, rather than, hey, let's just work in our own town community. So, kinda shame on us for some of this traffic, um, and now we have to fix the problem. So, this is a, uh, email, this is not my words, this is an email somebody asked me to read from the planning board. Uh, so, I'll try to summarize this, because it's pretty long. Uh, they like the, they thought the short-term plan is reasonable, uh, but it doesn't address the disconnected sidewalks or the lack of bike lanes. For example, why should impact fees be used for projects that leave the job unfinished, referring to the sidewalks? He believes that adding a dedicated left-turn lane on both sides of Route thirty-five, along with a smart traffic signal, would resolve the largest traffic issues that we face. The long-term recommended recommendations, he has big concerns about, he doesn't wanna widen the roads, uh, in our village area. And he has concerns about bike road, bike lanes and pedestrians down there, um, since that's our village center. And he would recommend, uh, not widening the roads, but put multi-use paths, multi-use paths for bicycles and pedestrians, and separate the traffic on both sides of twenty-five. He suggested a roundabout, where we just discussed that. And he is concerned about the lack of attention about bicycles and pedestrians. That's his summarized version of what he wanted to say, so, that's, that's, that's him, and I already spoke my part, so.
There you go. And I will say, and you can't see it on the small little screen, but we did include sidewalks and pedestrian accommodations throughout.
There's been lots of concerns by developers and a bunch of people about there's sidewalks going to nowhere and unfinished sidewalks kind of everywhere in town, which is kind of a pet peeve for some folks, so.
I used to live in Standish, it was a pet peeve of mine when I lived here.
So, you're saying your plan does have sidewalks that finish somewhere and connects things and?
All of the areas you saw constructed, especially in the long term, have sidewalks included with them. The short-term solution has connectivity with sidewalks, but it's not really expanding the sidewalk network.
Thank you. I would say that, I think, um, some of the comments that I heard, um, you know, the town, the town reached out to Goral Palmer to do a study, and that's what they did, right? We're not, they're not inviting volume of traffic to come through Standish. I think, I've heard that setter or something like that. In my opinion, it's, it's looking at the projected volume that could come through Standish and being prepared and to, you know, be ready for it, is what I, I get out of it. And I think we need to, um, be proactive and be ready for this. And then, you know, obviously, you said twenty forty-six, it's twenty, twenty-one years from now, so. But to start some of these projects, especially at twenty-five and thirty-five, uh, and possibly Oak Hill, getting out of there is crazy. So, um, with the, would you be getting impact? I know you're talking about impact fees on residential buildings. If there's commercial, would they get the same impact fee, or would it be a, a bigger impact fee?
It's a per-trip impact fee, so, if something goes in that's a high volume for a PM generator, the commercial likely end up paying a higher portion. So, something like a Hanaford, I know it's already there, but it's the easy example, would pay more, a lot more per building than residential would, and would cover a lot more than a standard subdivision would, because, you know, a hundred-unit subdivision is generating somewhere around ninety trips. The Hanaford during the peak hour is gonna generate, you know, that shopping plaza probably generates four hundred during the peak hour, so it would be paying on the order of, you know, four times, most likely.
Nice.
It says on page two that this plan, uh, this one that, that was developed, was, it only used three out of seven potential developments, so what's gonna happen when the other ones come in?
They would be collected in the impact fees, we were just looking at what those projects were gonna be generating.
Traffic-wise? You, it, here, it says, uh, it says, "The Woodland Subdivision identified seven potential completed developments. Out of the seven, three are used in this evaluation."
Yep, we.
As the other four have not been approved. So, this, this plan is for the three that were involved, what happens when the other four come in?
So, the, the base volumes that we used for twenty, or really twenty twenty-five, before we inflated them to twenty twenty-six, we added those volumes in already, anticipating.
All seven?
Uh, the three that have been approved, the others are.
So.
But the other ones are not moving forward at this point, so we didn't wanna overinflate the numbers and create a problem. They would still be collected as part of impact fees, though, so we tried to kind of create a balance.
Gotcha.
So, the ones that we knew were, you know, likely, because they'd already received some level of approval, we included. Uh, ones that we've just been in, or had just been in discussions, I guess, for lack of a better word, with the town, um, were not included.
Gotcha.
The three would have been Woodbury, Rose Lane, and Five Brothers.
Five Brothers, okay. So, is that some, is that something that we have to keep in the back of our head when we're looking at this? That there's more hanging out there that could possibly?
There's always that possibility of, you know, it's hard to predict the future. The biggest thing for the town is, which I think the council needs to think about, is the construction timeline of how long it takes for this to occur. I mean, uh, to, the next stage, if something were to, to occur, is we have to get either money approved for engineering of it, and then have the engineering review, have council approval or whatever, then another year of funding, sending it to the voters twice, so it's two years at a minimum. Third year, maybe a construction season, so you're talking three years out before anything happens. And just think about what it's gonna be in three years from now. The way the municipal government works, it's a slow process to be able to get that done and approved. So we really have to think towards the future. I mean, I'm not dis- disagreeing towards more research into this or whatever, but it's something that needs to be addressed.
We're on the same page. I'm thinking about the future as well. I'm thinking that this plan sets up for the three buildings, the three housing complexes, we wanna call them, that are coming in. But there's four more on the docket that aren't being included. So what's gonna happen when we say, yeah, let's go ahead and build those?
Keep in mind that it takes the, so the twenty twenty-six, if we go with the short-term solution, takes the level of service of the intersection from an F to a, I believe it was a C. So there's a lot of extra capacity there. That is what will take that into account. You know, those projects will pay in, and then as they pay in, you can start working on the next phase of the project. So I agree that there's going to be a, I mean, regardless of if the impact fee goes into place or not, those projects are probably still gonna move forward. There's still gonna be a problem that's not gonna get resolved. So by putting it forward, then at least you're being proactive and getting ready to solve the solution, solve the problem that exists. But I don't think there's any way to always be completely in front of it, um, without a moratorium.
To give you an idea of costs, roughly into this intersection down here, we have one eight, one point eight to one point nine. That's, then subtract out the water district, a six hundred thousand dollar MDOT, MPI grant. So the actual cost to the voters was probably somewhere around a million dollars in that, in that ballpark range, one to one point one type of deal. And we're trying to collect impact. So right now, we'll have roughly two hundred thousand to it. But we can't just collect impact and say, impact is paying, paying for this. But we can use that money to pay down the debt, to pay down that bond, bond.
Exactly.
And there would be nothing that would preclude you from trying to get grants from DOT to help offset some of those additional costs.
Same thing, maybe asking for another M, MPI grant up there. I think the dollar amount's still same, six twenty-five or whatever it's eligible to, uh, for that, you know, so.
Yep. Um, I guess where I was going with that was, my concern is that we're bringing in more multifamily residences per the comprehensive plan. That's, that was the goal, more multifamily, more high-density housing in this area. And what we're, what we're planning for right now is good for what we have, plus those three developments to twenty forty-six. If we're gonna keep bringing in high-density housing, do we need to plan better for twenty forty-six? That's where I'm going with it. Is this enough?
I mean, I asked Ryan today is, well, what about if we just did the long-term plan today? What's the cost? And I think we set a ballpark of six million bucks.
Yeah, six to seven million to do everything at once.
So we could save two million dollars by just doing the long-term plan.
Correct.
But that also means changing Standish basically to Wyndham in Standish Center.
That could be needed. Um, yeah, Brandon?
Just want to say one quick thing. And thank you for your time. Thank you for coming. And thank you for all your effort and time you put into presenting this for us. So I appreciate it.
Yeah, Ryan. Yeah, thanks.
All right.
Um, other written, any other questions? Um, yeah, again, thank you for, for everything. Thanks for the study. Now, I, I do have a question for you off, off the side, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely.
If there are no other questions, motion to adjourn. Second.